Welcome, everybody, again. We opened the meeting at 6:30 and we did our first book read session. Leadership on the Line by --
Heifetz and Linsky.
Heifetz and Linsky. So, we did that this evening and it was a good conversation. First time that we've done that, first time we've ever done that. First time I've ever done it. But it was good. So, we'll do that again during our workshop meetings from 6:30 to 7:00. Anybody's welcome to participate. You can pipe in, you can talk, you can help us out, you can use it. So, it'll be good. So, welcome. Tonight is our first night with Board Docs. Those of you that recall, we adopted this board management document system about a month ago, I guess. We went through training. So, tonight's our kickoff. So, basically, everything is on a web-based server. All the board information, what we see, for the most part, is what the public can see by accessing the site. I know, Dr. Bowers, you're going to get into this a little bit more a little bit later. So, tonight, if for some reason you see some of us, myself included, fumbling on an iPad, it's because I lost my space and I'm trying to find it. But I do have some backup. So, it'll take us probably a couple of meetings to kind of really get comfortable. But I could just see right off the bat that this is going to be a huge plus for public transparency, but just also how we kind of manage this stuff. And it's got to make an enormous amount of difference up at the district office as far as man-hours and productivity.
Yes, it is.
Like, it's got to be night and day. So, tonight's our kickoff, Board Docs initial. Dr. Bowers, would you like to introduce our special guest, one of many? Our auditor, Scott.
Okay. Well, actually, I'm going to ask Anne to do that if she --
Oh, okay.
Since she's had more experience with them. Although, we did get to meet a couple of weeks ago. That was our first time that we worked together.
We have Mr. Scott Puser from Raymond G. Puser CPA PC. He is our independent auditor. And he's here to go over the final financial statements for the year ended June 30th. So, Scott, we're going to sit you right up --
Why don't you come up here?
-- in the middle of the head table.
From the center.
Before I start the overview of the financial condition, I just want to go over a couple of items throughout that we noticed throughout the audit. Throughout the whole time, the district office, the business office did an excellent job. They do a good job maintaining the records and everything. This isn't just a couple-day process. We start this in March, starting with, you know, with a engagement letter and planning letter. And then, pretty much from there on, we're there for a day, at least a day, a month, all the way through doing the audit. And then, I met with the audit committee a couple of weeks ago, and then I come here and present to the board. So, throughout the whole process, there's a lot of steps involved. And I was able to, you know, anytime I needed any information, we were able to obtain it very quickly. We do a lot of stuff online, you know, emailing back and forth. And that's throughout the year, too, not just, you know, during the audit process. If questions come up, this way, we can kind of, if there's any problems, and solve them ahead of time. It helps a lot. And we discussed that today when I talked to the extra classroom, too. If they ever have questions, you know, feel free to call, you know, or talk to Anne, and they can contact us if there's any questions. So, this way, like I said, if there's any problems, we can help you eliminate them early and not wait till, you know, you can't do anything and you have a management letter. So, I just wanted to mention that throughout, like I said, we had no problem cooperation courtesy throughout the whole time. Couple items. The district received a non-qualified clean opinion. You had no significant deficiencies and no material weaknesses were identified. And like I said, I met a couple of weeks ago with the audit committee, and we went over the whole financial and the extra classroom report. And I just wanted to put it out there that your audit committees, over the years, not just this year, but they were very knowledgeable and they, it's a good conversation, like, we'll have for an hour or over an hour, you know, going over all the, you know, all the things in it. Besides the financial, other, you know, there are things we bring up, and the corrective actions are taken almost immediately. When I was there this pastime, stuff we had talked about before with the IT, they had the whole, they had the audit done, and we went, I saw the whole process. And that's what we like to see, that if you recommend stuff, that, you know, you come back and there's a whole plan here. And actually, they had, you had a good report there, looking at the IT. And it's actually a tool for us, because we can show there's other schools, that this is something that you can do. So, and they are, like I said, very proactive, very good group. They, like I said, we went over a lot of stuff and had a good conversation. I also came today, as one of the recommendations, was I talked to the extra classroom, I talked to the advisors, and went over some stuff. So, you wouldn't have those, you know, try to help eliminate those comments, educate them. And it was actually a good hour conversation with them, going over things, you know, to improve procedures, controls, and, you know, help eliminate some of those items. And I think that was very productive.
Were these the faculty advisors who were in the workshop with you?
Yes.
That weren't the students?
Yep.
The message will get passed on to the students from the advisors.
Yeah.
Is that the first time we've done that?
Yeah, yeah, it's the first time I've done it.
It's a great idea, by the way.
Yeah. It's more and more, we've, it's a good way to get the information. You know, you always see them, you get a management letter, like, oh, you did this, this, and this wrong. Well, then, they don't see why, you know, why. So, we sat down, we went all through, here's what you should be doing. Like, they say, well, what if I have this? And we, you know, gave them examples of, you know, why you don't do this, and why you do, you know, do things, you know, this, this way. And, you know, it should help out a lot. Like, then now, gets them thinking about what they should be doing. And like I said, if they ever have questions, I say, just look at the material and say, you know, they can always contact and say, well, you know, am I doing this? Should I do that? So, it does help out a lot. Now, going to the financial, looking at your general fund, your financial condition compared to last year improved overall. Yeah, I just got a couple of quick figures, just comparing some numbers from last year. This year, last year's assets, you had about 4.8. This year, you have 4.5, which reduced. But your liabilities went from 2.3 to 1.8, which was a reduction of about $500,000. Then, your overall fund balance went from 2.4 to about 2.6, so a little over $100,000. With that positive outcome, you were able to assign $725,000 towards taxes for 2014, '15. And you're still able to maintain reserves for capital reserve and insurance reserve, unemployment insurance reserve, employee retirement contribution reserve, and tax or share reserve. And in addition to that, you still maintain an on-aside fund balance of $890,000, which is just around 4%. So, that's excellent. You have set aside reserves for future, you have money to help reduce taxes, and you have current fund balance, too. So, you're kind of balancing everything out. And we like to see that, that you have a financial plan where you can keep maintaining the level of education that you have, maintaining your resources and your facilities, to keep that consistent education level to the children of the district. The way that came about, looking at, you know, we looked at your revenues compared to budget, and your expenditures compared to budget. This district was able to maximize revenues compared to budget by $199,000, which was good, because you actually had shortfall in property taxes, which was due to, you took the stable rate option for TRS. So, you had to adjust your tax base, and it had to be deferred for this year. But on the other side, your state aid was higher by $178,000, and your miscellaneous revenues were $71,000. So, you still had a positive revenue. Looking to take your expenditures compared to budget, this year, you spent 96% of your budget, and last year, you spent 95% of the budget. So, you're looking at that, and it's very consistent. So, every year, when you put together a budget, it's consistent from year to year. And that's what we like to see, not, you know, one year, you're at 98, next year, you're at 93. Every year, you're in that, you know, a couple percentage points within each year. A couple areas of savings were construction, regular, and play benefits. So, you put those together, and then you ended up with still a positive outcome for 2014. Couple other items, looking at your financial, was your school lunch had a gain of $10,000, and you lowered your deficit to $55,000 with a transfer of $20,000, which is actually a relatively, a low amount for districts to transfer into their school lunch fund. Nowadays, we have districts that transfer over $100,000 to help cover their school lunch program. And like I said, even with a $20,000 transfer, you're still able to get a gain of $10,000, which is great. And I, we had talked to the school lunch manager this year and went over a bunch of things. I discussed with the audit committee that she had a lot of different plans, and it was good, very enthusiastic, and it kind of showed why, with the gain that you had, and hopefully, you keep up that process. Because it's very difficult now with the regulations and what you can serve, it's putting a strain on the programs. And the costs are still going up, so it makes it tough. Looking at your capital fund, you had several projects that were active during the 2013-14 year. You had your field locker room project, and I was just looking at the field. I actually hadn't seen it. When I drove this way, I saw the field. It's really nice. It's like to see that, like we had talked last year about, you set aside capital reserve money and stuff to work on these different projects, to enhance your facilities and stuff that you can offer to the children of the district. And the other one was your energy performance contract, and that was worked on, too. So, looking in the future, you still have, it's still going to be, it's going to be a tight there, because you have, you still have the 2% property tax cap. State aid, even with the increases that we're, districts are obtaining, you're still below levels of about 2011, a couple of years back. So, even though you're still getting more state aid, it's still, it's still low to about three years ago. So, restrictions on revenues makes it harder for districts. Then, you still have your retirement, even though you took the stable, stable rate option, it's still over 14%. You know, other districts are paying, they're playing, they're paying 17 and 1/2 this year. But what happens, you eventually have to pay, you know, it's just pushing it off. For now, to be able to keep everything stable. So, hopefully, the rates will come back down. They should be, because the employee's retirement has dropped down. On the average, it was 20.9, and now, it's going to be down to 20.2 for this upcoming year. So, but you're still looking at a huge expense for districts that's mandated, and you have to do it. And still with the tight, tight revenues, it puts districts in a tight situation. Luckily, for your district, you do proper planning and management, looking at your fund balance and reserves, so you can handle those challenges that come ahead. And that's what we like to see, is that you're not planning just for now, you have to plan for a couple of years. And that's what we always recommending, is planning a couple of years down the road, not just looking at this year. You used to be able to plan a lot longer down the road, but the way things, how volatile everything is, if you do a three-year plan, that's what we like to see, I guess. And keep managing, you know, looking at your reserves and your fund balance each year to see where you'll be, to be able to keep providing, like I said, providing the resources to the children of the district, and keeping your facilities, you know, facilities up, That's about how I have, if there's any questions or comments.
Peter, you and Evan are both, obviously, on the audit committee. Do you guys want to comment and then just also mention the other people on the audit committee who do a great, obviously, a great job?
Yeah. Yeah, first of all, Tom Campenile, who's our committee chair, he apologizes for not being here this evening. He would have liked to have joined us, but he can't due to work. But he does have a letter to the board that perhaps I can read later on, once we're done. But, so, Tom is our chair. We also have Roman Daniloff on the committee. He works for a large investment bank. And we have Carol Powell is our other non-board member on the committee, and she runs a local financial services company. So, and Tom is a partner at a big accounting firm. So, we're very fortunate to have such great expertise from the community to help us out. So, yeah, we reviewed the financial reports with Scott a couple of weeks back. Committee was very happy in general with what's in the report. It reflects very well on the district. The report, the report itself, at least the financial statements are not for the feigned of heart. We'll be posting the whole thing on the school website. But because these reports are so difficult to digest, we feel, we place a lot of emphasis on the management discussion and analysis portion that's up front, that's really the narrative that goes along with the numbers. So, we had made some specific requests to have a little more detail flashed out in those narratives to explain, because there are a couple of big swings in there, like the net position changing by one and a half million. You know, somebody might see that, because, oh, you know, it's a huge number. We're about to fall off the fiscal cliff. But no, once you understand that there are some pretty simple to understand reasons why there's that swing in this particular year. So, we asked for that to be put in. And then, there were a couple of other things that we just felt required a little more explanation. But all in all, committee was very happy.
Yeah. It's great. I mean, for me, that's been on the audit committee for many, many years, to see it come around full circle, having board members involved in it now, having the superintendent and the business manager, having Anne there, is really great. Although, we reserve the right, as the committee, just to meet with Scott by ourselves if we felt the need to. There hasn't been the need to. So, you know, I thought it was a very positive report. The one number that jumped out at me was that 97% of the budget is spent. And for those people that really, you know, you know, think about the numbers and do we really need such a high budget, you know, at least you know that, you know, we're spending what we're asking for. You know, we're not spending 85% of it or spending more than it. So, to me, that was really, you know, great. And also, a lot, we did a lot of talk about the cafeteria, talking about how, you know, efficient it's gotten, you know, in just a year. So, that's a really positive piece that's going on. But it is, to echo what Peter said, we are very fortunate to have those three members of the community, you know, on it, because they're very knowledgeable.
Great. Any other questions for Scott from the board? Jen, John? I got a couple.
I just have a question about the cafeteria. I was on the audit committee last year, and that was definitely a topic, a hot topic for us. So, it sounds like $10,000 has been recouped for the cafeteria fund. And then, she's continuing, the manager is continuing to make changes. So, do we see it as like continued increase and continued improvement, or is it like this is where it might be for a while?
I'm confident, I'm hopeful, that it will continue, of course. The, will be, I'll be starting to do monthly income statements to monitor that, so that we can move forward and know that if we're continuing to increase the, oh, can you just hand the microphone? I'm sorry.
No.
Thanks. Sorry, Cecilia. I'm going to do monthly income statements for the cafeteria, so that we can monitor the direction that the revenues and expenditures are going, and right up until budget time, so that if it doesn't appear that we're going to continue that trend, then we could talk more at budget time, in case we have to take care of that deficit from an increased transfer or not. Okay.
Good. John, anything?
Just two quick questions. Our debt, our outstanding debt and our debt to budget or debt to property value ratio, how do we compare compared to other like districts? Are we under-leveraged? Are we over-leveraged?
You actually have lower debt compared to, like, other districts your size.
Okay.
And actually, like, with the project you, you know, just had worked on, you didn't really, you're not going to end up having to borrow the whole thing because of proper planning. You're able to do that, you know, maybe when you're all done, you might, actually, probably, you might have to borrow anything. So, you're looking at that, like you said, you have, you have some debt, you have the energy performance contract, but that'll be saving you money over time, too. So, but looking at your debt, your overall debt isn't, is at a pretty low level compared to, like, other districts.
Okay. And if, the topic of space has come up, and it's something I think that's going to get some conversation more in detail later in the year and even next year. Is there a number that we could kind of play with in the back of our heads where you can add to your debt without affecting your bond rating, or really affecting your overall financial condition? Like, what I do at home. You know, I want this, I want to add to my house, but you know what? I know I can only finance 100 grand that fits into my financial budget.
Yeah, well, there's different ways of doing that, because we had talked, I had talked to Anne, because you still have a capital, you still have a capital reserve there that you actually can still put money in. So, depending on how years, you know, pan out, you might be able to put more money into that, which actually could help, you know, when you do, you know, eventually want to add on space, because I know you had the monitors and everything, that that would actually help reduce your debt, you know. So, you actually might have to borrow less there, too, when it comes to that.
Okay.
Like I said, with that kind of planning, you know, it helps, you know, it helps out.
Okay. But it's not an unreasonable way to look at it?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. And then, just, just so I kind of recap for the television people, if I understood everything correctly, we've got an unqualified clean opinion, which is as good as you can get. We've got a proactive audit committee. You guys like to see, from an auditing standpoint, consistency in the planning and execution of our budgets. And there's a proactive approach to managing reserves and fund balances. And you've got an excellent business office and back office staff. Did I summarize everything pretty good?
Sounds about right.
Okay. And then, just, I do want to throw another compliment in there for Anne Diniya. Ever since Anne has started here, she has really done an amazing job with the business office, and you really should be recognized more often, if not daily. But we only meet twice a month. So, I just want to compliment you, because you have done an amazing job, and you've done it in a way that goes over and beyond. So, I just want to thank you. And Scott, thank you. You know, you've done a great job with us in the years that you've been here, and, you know, we appreciate your frankness and honesty in working with the audit committee, who's done a great job as well. Thanks, Peter, Evan, and I'm going to send a little note to the rest of the guys. Great. Thank you.
I have to, would you like me to read Tom's letter recommending acceptance of the auditor's report?
Okay. Dear members of the audit committee, one of the audit committee's primary tasks is to submit a written report to the board following our review of the draft external audit report and the management letter. Another of our tasks is to assist the board in interpreting these two documents. The audit committee wishes to report that we conducted our review of the draft audit report with Scott Puser on Monday, October 6. Mr. Puser walked the members of the committee through the drafts of the financial statements and extra classroom activity statement of cash receipts and dispersments, as well as the independent auditor's report and management letter comments. The committee wishes to refer you to the external auditor's letter to the Board of Education on pages 49 to 51 of the financial statements report, and the auditor's findings and evaluation on pages six and seven of the extra classroom activity fund report. Each of these identifies the auditor's comments and recommendations on internal control and other operational matters for the board and the district to consider. At its last meeting, the members of the audit committee reviewed the comments and had a chance to discuss the district's proposed response plans. We will monitor the district's progress in addressing each of these items over the coming months. The audit committee unanimously recommends accepting the audit report as presented by Raymond Puser CPA for the 2013-14 fiscal year. I'm happy to forward any questions you may have regarding the report to the committee. Sincerely, Tom Campenile.
So, should we add that to our next business meeting to formally accept the report, and then the correspondents can come to us in our weekend stuff?
That would be great.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next stop. Sorry. Okay, next week is New York State, I think it's New York State, School Board Recognition Week.
Yes, it is.
And we don't meet next week, so I think we're celebrating this evening, for lack of a better term.
It's a true surprise, man.
So, I'll turn this over to Dr. Bowers. I have a couple of things to say, but I'll wait.
Well, I want to mention that there are bags in front of each of our board members with a little token of our appreciation. The amount of time and energy that you put into this district for nothing but to help and to support and to create a wonderful school environment for our kids really needs to be recognized. So, we thank you for your time and your energy and your dedication and the great work that you do, and you put in so many hours, and we're very lucky to have you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers. There's a proclamation here from the governor, Governor Cuomo, which, Julia, do you want to?
Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by the more, by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State. And whereas the men and women serving as members of school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education. And whereas the members of New York's local school boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve, and in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And whereas, during October 27 through 31, 2014, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week, and it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Now, therefore, I, Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, do hereby proclaim October 27 through 31, 2014, as School Board Recognition Week in the Empire State.
Great. Thanks to you, Julia. Thank you, Governor Cuomo. Just a couple of quick comments. You know, obviously, I've done this for a few years, and I keep coming back for whatever reason. You kind of get attached to it, for whatever reason. And, you know, it's an unusual volunteer position, because you do put an enormous amount of time into it. But it's pretty cool. And, you know, I don't know, it's one of these things that, you know, if you've never done it, you should. Now, you may never do it again, but that's okay. The experience of actually doing it for a term, or three years, one year, two years, six, is probably an experience you'll never forget, and you learn an enormous amount. I mean, what I've learned doing this is helped me in my business, it's helped me at home. You know, it's great, it's good, it's cool stuff. So, you know, I get attached to this stuff, so, you know.
Yeah.
It's all good. So, anything you guys want to comment on, you know?
Well, from my perspective, you know, for, you know, I've been on now, this is my seventh year. I mean, the only reason that I keep doing it year after year is because of just, I just feel, I just see what the district has done, and every year, it just keeps moving and moving. And, you know, it's nice to be a small, little part, you know, of that. And, you know, the moment that I felt that, you know, that the district wasn't going in that direction and going in the opposite direction, or that maybe, you know, I'm standing as an obstacle to whatever, then, you know, I wouldn't do it. But, you know, so far, I mean, I've seen just nothing but positive. And, you know, just seeing, working with great people, Dr. Valenti, now Dr. Bowers, the administrators for Haldane, it's just been such a pleasure. So, I mean, that's why I personally do it.
Yeah, I like your statement, as far as, you know, learning more than I ever thought I would, or would have to, to be honest with you. But it definitely is an eye-opener, and you kind of see how things work behind the scenes, which maybe seems a little strange in New York State education law, because that's a whole little world unto itself. But, yeah, I mean, it's definitely, you know, you know, the teachers are at the front line, obviously, with the students, are the ones that are there with you day-to-day, helping you out, and the administrators back them up. to day, helping you out, and the administrators back them up. And, you know, we're kind of a little bit removed from that classroom experience, but this is our way that we can try and help out.
Yeah, and I'll share. So I'm, I'm the newest member of the school board, and this is just my second year. So the first year was definitely a little bit like hazing. I felt like we tackled every single big issue you could possibly tackle. But it was a great learning experience and a great learning curve. And one of the things that I come away with is that, you know, we, as school board members, get to see all the, all the dirty laundry and all of the really clean laundry of the school. Like, we see every dollar that goes in and out, we see every challenge, every success, we know about all of it. And what's great is that now that I know so much more than I knew, I still think that Haldane is not just an amazing place, but an even more amazing place than I thought. And that's really a huge compliment, that once you start pulling those rocks up and looking under them, that you really like what you see. And that's, that's a compliment to, you know, the entire team. And the other thing that I really love about it is that, you know, there's five of us up here, and Joe, the president, gets a lot of the heat and gets a lot of the workload, and gets a lot of the talking. But really, it's every single person's vote up here is equal, and we're really a team. And there's no one board member that has more power than the other. And that's really, that's special, and that's not something that you see in a lot of organizations. And so the actual workings of a board, I think, is really special, that each of us really do work together, and our collective voice actually becomes the voice. So it's pretty cool to be a part of.
Great. Well said. You're going to make a great school board president someday. Okay. And just for the public out there, if you have any interest in even considering getting involved in this, do yourself a favor, give me a call, I'll sit down with you, we'll go out to lunch, we'll go out to dinner, and I'll give you every piece of information or knowledge or wisdom that I've ever learned in my years, and I can guarantee it'll probably be helpful. So, consider it. I'm easy to find, and take me up on it, it'll be worth it, I think. And that's it. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Let's move on to information reports, and we get to hear from the A Team here.
Well, we have a number of different things to report out on. One, we've touched on a little bit. We are using Board Docs, and this is the first official meeting that we are using it. We are also in the process of creating a YouTube channel. The last board meeting that we had was, is now on YouTube. It's not on a link within our website yet, but if you search it, you can find it. And I believe the next one, we will have a link to our Board Docs, so you can go into Board Docs, and you can see all of the meetings in chronological order. So that's the first, and so we'll keep you posted. We talked a little bit already during our book talk on the PBL workshop that we had. And so at this point, we had a two-hour workshop for our teachers to learn about project-based learning. And the two-hour workshop had about 45 members of the learning community take part in it. About 40 of them were teachers, and the rest were administrators. And basically, what it is, is an interdisciplinary understanding of how to take the, the work that we're going to be teaching our students and create and put it in a way that, first of all, releases some of the responsibility for the learning to the student, teaches them how to be responsible learners, and integrate all the different aspects of the learning cycle into a project-type environment, and ultimately come out with some, some processing and ultimately some end product. And it's not necessarily a project, it could be a number of different things, it could be the creation of something that's really driven by the students. So that was the first two hours. It was kind of a tantalizing period of time that gave teachers a taste of what they were potentially going to be part of. About 25 of those teachers have signed up now for a three-day institute. The first two days of the, of the three-day institute has already occurred, and we're going to start to see the PBL, the project-based experiences, start in our classrooms. We had our kindergarten team there, we had our high school teachers there. And so this is, it's obviously very different to run a project with kindergarteners. I know that they're going to go to the, they're going to create a pizza restaurant and create pizza and menus and become servers and do all those wonderful things, and learn about what it's like to be in a business aspect of something that they like, and ultimately, they'll be able to eat pizza. So, but, and then it will increase from there, right up through the high school. So I'd like to congratulate our teachers for a job well done. The amount of energy and conversation and just initiative that was exhibited by our faculty was outstanding. So we will see, we will see the beginning of this, and we'll see it grow throughout the year. Going through our discovery and strategic planning update, we are going to have our first parent and community meeting will be held on Thursday, October 30th. And the work that we've done with our, our teachers, our administrators, our Board of Education, and today, our students, we will now be looking at doing with our school community and our parents. And we, we thank anybody who has signed up. We are also going to be sending personal invitations to people that we think may have an interest in being part of this, and we look forward to that. So if you have an interest in being part of the, the end part of the discovery process and the beginning of the strategic planning process, it'll be a total of about five meetings, four of which will be strategy meetings, one will be the presentation to the board, and that will run from January to May. And so it'll be one night a month. It won't be overwhelming, but it's certainly something we'd like to see people be part of. The next, let's see. Just a reminder that the next business meeting of the Board of Education will be held on November 4th at 7 o'clock here in the Music Room. The next workshop meeting of the Board of Education will be November 18th. And the topic of this workshop will be modifying the start times for students in the district. And we have earlier start times for our high school and our middle school students, and we'll be looking at the potential of modifying that and looking at the ripple effects of making those types of decisions and what kinds of things we would have to be able to manage to allow that to occur. So it's not that this is necessarily going to happen, but we're certainly going to look at any opportunity that we can and see if it's, it's possible to begin school a little later for our older students. I also have been asked by the New York State Education Department to let the district know that, and both the students, the parents, and the board, that we are, that the, one of the goals of the New York State Education Department is to limit the amount of testing that we are asking of our Haldane students, and to make sure that any of the testing that we ask our students to take has merit and is worthwhile, and will help the growth process and the understanding of how our students are learning. And so we have done an analysis of our, the tests that we ask of our kids. We are putting something on our website that lists all the different forms of assessments that will occur throughout the year. And so if you have an interest in learning about that, it's, it's now on the website. And then the last item on here is called Words of Wisdom from Our Students. And we have two of our wise students here today who shared about an hour, probably an hour to an hour to 15 minutes worth of thinking and great ideas with me, as well as some of the administrators in the district today, as we were continuing on in our discovery process. And I opened the meeting by telling the students that it was probably the most important meeting I would have had since I began my superintendency, because we wanted to know what the students felt we needed to do in order to make them college and career-ready now, and college and career-ready in 10, in 10 years, and what that would, what the differences would be now and then, and what we, what we should be looking at for our students. So I thank you, and two of our students who are part of that are here. So thank you for your time today. And the other thing that we talked about towards the end of the meeting was the interest of our student body to have ongoing communication and conversations. So we will be running meetings, probably four meetings this year, with our students and inviting them, and if they would like to be part of it. One of which will be a budget meeting. And one of the questions that they asked today is why they are not part of the discussion phase of the budget process. So they will become part of the discussion phase of the budget process. So that's going to happen, as well as a couple of other meetings. So, thank you.
Great. I still think one of the best things that we do, or I don't know if they still do it, but we should, is when we sit down and spend three-quarters of a day with all the students, we did it at least the last time I was on the board, we did it with the high school students, and we did it also with the middle school, and just sat there, and I knew Brian and Brent facilitated, and it was great. The conversation, the dialogue was just absolutely fabulous, and how sharp and intuitive these kids are. And they get it. And we've got to somehow find a way to put that into our schedule. I don't know if you guys did it last year, but.
We did it last year.
We should. Definitely. It's got to be a must, and, because I think it's one of the best things that we ever did. And it, well worth the time. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to do the student reports, so that they can?
I think that would be a great idea.
Head out? You guys want to introduce?
You got a bowler.
Okay, well, it's, it's a pleasure to introduce Olivia Olson. Olivia is our recently democratically-elected Student Council President. So she's going to come up and share some news with the middle school.
All right.
Okay. So not a lot has been happening, but we do have a few things. Our first upcoming dance is coming in November the 14th, and it's in the planning. We're coming up with a theme currently. A water fountain has been fixed down by, like, the downstairs by Mrs. Brat's room. It has a water bottle filter now. It's, I don't think it's working yet, but it's about to. They're finishing up on the final touches. And we're dressing up for Halloween on the 31st as middle school students. And, yeah, that's pretty much it. So, yeah.
Thank you. And congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. Our high school senior representatives, CJ Geller and Samantha Ricketts, are here and to present. But I'm also going to introduce our new appointee, Steven Genjoulis, who will be representing the student body as a junior this year. He's, yes, he is actually concussed. So he's been out of school for a couple of days, and he'll be back with us next month. So CJ and Sam, it's all yours.
Great.
Okay, well, there's not really much happening in the high school either, so.
We don't want to hear that.
Well, it's October, nothing happens in October. I guess the most recent thing would be the Senior College Visit Day, which was 10/15, where we, the seniors had the opportunity to visit colleges, either DCC or Mount St. Mary, with the school or on your own college visit, which I guess allowed us to go see a college and not have to cram it into a busy weekend schedule, which was good, except not many colleges have visits on a Wednesday for some reason, which is really weird. Like, just not many did. But it was a good way for seniors to get out and see college campuses that they wouldn't normally be able to see. So.
I don't know if this is too high, but.
Put it down.
I don't want, oh, thank you. Yeah, not much is happening, but we got that vending machine up and working in the high school. So I know that's great for a lot of kids who don't go to the cafeteria or out for lunch. And the homecoming dance was a success. And, yeah, I think it's a great year so far, and everyone's excited for what's to come. So, yep.
I want to ask a question.
Sure.
I know normally you guys ask the questions, but you guys are new seniors. So what's it like being a senior, and how is the culture of the senior class thus far? I have my own impressions, but I'm curious what your impressions are.
That's a great question.
So far, I think we're definitely getting a lot closer together. And so far, we're very well behaved, I'd say. But, yeah, we're all excited for the year.
Not even drastic yet.
Good answer.
How about your wonderful senior day that you had, down by the water?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the senior trip?
Yep.
That was fun. It was a bit cold, but it was fun. Got the kayak, going to frisbee golf.
Good experience.
It was really nice.
Cool. Now, will they both be here on the 16th of November when we talk about early start time? Do you know?
I'm, I'm for that. I don't like waking up at 6:15 in the morning.
Okay. Because if you are both going to be here, we'd love to hear from you, like, what you think about it. You know, as far as starting, we're starting actually one hour later as a high school student.
Yeah, well, I'm an average teenager, so I'm pretty sure we'll go to bed around 10, 10:30. So it'd be really nice to wake up an hour later.
Go.
Unless you do sports.
Can I read butt?
Great. Thanks, guys. Okay, next up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Olivia. Okay. I'll let you guys decide your.
So, for not a lot going on, I've certainly felt very busy these past few weeks. Few things to share that I do want to highlight. Tomorrow, we're having an opportunity to a thank you celebration for our Maker Space. So we do have the space. It's open, it's functional, it looks terrific. We've had some recent PBL, professional development, project-based learning, PD, in the space. It is starting to get use from our students and staff. So tomorrow afternoon is an opportunity really just to publicly acknowledge the many, many individuals who've supported the project, starting with facilities, all the way up through the support from the board, the PTA, the school foundation, and the many, many individuals who've contributed their time and expertise. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity and inviting those individuals up to the space tomorrow afternoon. And we'll have some demonstrations with some of our middle school students showcasing some of the resources that are available for students and staff in the space. So we're excited about that. I did want to mention that we are very excited to kick off our eighth grade mentoring program in the next few weeks. So I do want to publicly acknowledge and thank our high school guidance counselor, Kristin Sauner, high school principal, Brian Arm, for his help and support, as well as our K-12 psychologist, Tara Rounds, who've been working with a group of high school juniors and seniors, who in turn are going to be assigned a small mentoring group of eighth graders, in which they'll work with them every other week, specifically within the framework of our second step curriculum. So you all are aware that we have an articulated character education, K-7, second step curriculum, and we're going to implement that curriculum within our mentoring program to really help build those relations and that transition from middle school to high school. So we're excited to kick that off November 14th, I think, is our start date, with the goal, every other Friday, our mentors will be meeting with our eighth grade students in a small group. And finally, I want to mention that our middle school improvement team has decided on our text for our second annual community read. So we will be publicizing that text, James Howe's The Misfits, which was published probably about 10 to 12 years ago. It's quite a popular text. It has been used in many different communities for our community reads, so we're excited, you know, and certainly is, we can all kind of reflect on our middle school experience and identify in some way with feeling like a misfit at some point during that tumultuous time and that journey through middle school. So we're looking forward to a real rich conversation and to build on the momentum that we had last year. And certainly, we set the bar very high with the text that we used, RJ Palacio's Wonder. So we're excited about this year as well.
Great.
That's what I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Just two quick things, one quicker than the other. The first is the day before we start the mentor program, which is November 13th. Just kind of like to give a little plug for the wellness committee and the cafeteria and local produce. We are going We will have to purchase the pasta, although we're not making the pasta. So, hopefully, we can get a large turnout for that. And any money that we make will go right back into local food in the cafeteria, local produce in the cafeteria, and our farm-to-school program. So, a plug for that.
Sorry, what is that, Julie?
November 13th. It's a Thursday night. So, I'd also like to just quickly talk a little bit about an initiative we're looking to start this year, which is building a partnership, an even further partnership with the preschools in the area in Phillips Town. I think having children in a different school district and watching the process that they do in terms of getting their kindergarten students into the school, I think we do a really good job of knowing the children before they come to us. And we have a lot of visits with them, and we really get to know them. But what I'm looking to do, what we're looking to do this year is, there's a childcare council of Putnam and Duchess County, and all of the preschool educators have to do 40 hours of staff development. And I've reached out to the council to see if I can offer some staff development here locally for our Phillips Town preschools. I think it would just help further the partnership we have with them, to provide them with some learning walks in our kindergarten program, to talk with our kindergarten teachers, so they can, our teachers can learn from them, and they can learn from us, to just try to build a stronger partnership. I've spoken with Ms. Wilson, who's willing to come maybe to one of the sessions and talk a little bit more about CPSE, which is Special Education Programming for Children Prior to Coming Into the School District, to make sure that children who have needs before they come to us, that we're recognizing those needs and assisting and getting those children the services they need before they come to us. So, I'll keep you in the loop on how that's going. I'm hoping to have the first session right after the holiday season, right after, maybe, mid-January. So, I will keep you updated, but I'm excited about it. And the county has been very receptive, and we've had many conversations already about how to make this work.
Great idea.
Before I even get started, I just want to, well, let's thank Ann D'Nio Knight. I want to further acknowledge Ann D'Nio for her foresight and responsiveness. She, where credit where credit's due, she arranged this workshop with our extracurricular advisors this afternoon. It's really the first time that we've done that. Very wise choice. They were there well into an hour, hour and a half, asking a little, very particular, nuanced questions of Scott, and it was really a super productive workshop, so I'm really happy about that. It brings great relief to me, and I want to thank my colleague for making that possible. Now, CJ talked about the special day on October 15th from a senior perspective as a college visit day, but it's really a multi-pronged day with a lot of moving parts to it. We're very, very proud of that. I want to thank the class parents for really helping me to develop that. It's really, it's in its third year. It's really about equity that day and convenience for family. It's about those two things. We typically, most schools typically administer the PSAT on a Saturday, and you might have 50%, maybe 75% participation in that. The PSAT has value beyond being a practice exam for the SAT. It is a diagnostic tool also, and it gives families and schools really valuable information about students' progress in ELA and math. And when administered on a Saturday, a lot of families don't have access to that information. They choose not to participate, and by doing it during the week on a school day, it provides valuable information to the school and to families. So, we administer that to 10th and 11th graders, and we always now, with this new protocol, schedule our ninth-grade retreat that day, and then the seniors given the opportunity for a college visit. Again, equity. We might have students that might not be thinking about college, or they might think about Duchess but never really step foot on that campus. We've seen some real positive effects from that, just taking them there once where they might not otherwise. They might think they're going there after school, but then it turns out that they never register themselves or go up there. Students who are not interested in Mount St. Mary or DCC, they can go to a school wherever they like, but it also happens on Memorial Day weekend, where it's a long weekend already, which is a very popular weekend for college visits. So, it just becomes very convenient to families, and now it's kind of built into our culture, and they're really starting to take advantage of that opportunity as families. So, we're really proud of that, and again, I want to thank the class parents for helping me develop that. Two other things. One is the 10th grade iPad deployment is on schedule. Our iPads are here, they're being configured, and that will be distributed very shortly to the 10th grade students. We are adding an orientation for the students this year that we've kind of been developing from our mistakes from last year, and will be much more specific in kind of helping them hit the ground running with that device. Similarly, we coupled an iPad orientation for parents with our ninth and 10th grade parent night, so they feel better about a lot of their unanswered questions about the initiative. And lastly, honors acknowledgements, you know, in an average year, we might have one or two, again, back to the PSAT, we might have maybe one student that gets acknowledged for kind of extreme success and achievement on that exam. This year, we happen to have three. I think that's not just a coincidence, I think that's a testament to the growth of the school and how impressive our students are becoming year after year. For the camera, I know you all can read it, but I want the camera to hear me acknowledge. Wiley McDonald and Julia Olson were named commended students in the 2014 National Merit Scholarship Program. It's a pretty significant accomplishment. And even more impressive is Cameron Henderson, who was named a finalist in the 2014 National Merit Scholarship Program. In the eight years that I've been here, I think we've probably only had three finalists in that national merit. So, congratulations to those three students. It's quite an accomplishment, and we'll be sure to take their picture in front of the building and get a press release out very shortly. But I wanted you all to hear the news first.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Do you want to change?
Do we want to change over before she starts?
I can do it in two minutes.
I will.
So, I'll do it in 90 seconds. So, just, as many of you know, the Manitow School is a private school that opened in the Cold Spring School District. And last week, Dr. Bowers and I got to visit with them to talk about the special education responsibilities of Haldane as a result of their school being in our district of location at this point. So, if the time comes that they have students there with IEPs, it is Haldane's responsibility to provide those special education services. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. And we had a great conversation with them, and we really look forward to working collaboratively if that time should come. The other thing I just wanted to bring your attention to, since it's audit night, is as the technology co-chair who handles infrastructure, I spent the spring working with Edgitech on a technology audit. We met over the summer and came up with an action plan, and I did attend the last audit meeting to give them an update of where we were for October, and that is in your packets. And I believe it's in the packet that's online, if anyone's interested in seeing that.
Could I just mention what an impressive piece of work that is? We kicked this off within the audit committee about a year ago, based on recommendation from the external and the internal auditor, that this was something that we should focus on. But really, under Jen's leadership, this has really become a very impressive model that you heard Scott earlier talk about showing other districts who find themselves in the same situation, where they kind of realize they need to do this, but they don't know where to start. So, thanks, thanks a lot, Jen. It's a work in progress, but so far, there's been a lot of really active work done.
Great. Good job.
Basically, a couple of things. We celebrated our final senior night for our volleyball tonight, so all of our sports have completed the regular season. So, it's a nice, special tradition that we do, where we honor the seniors. A lot of the sports have kids talk about the seniors. It was, it's, everything ran smooth this year, so it was nice to hear, you know, them talk about their experiences with each other. So, that's always a fun time for our seniors. And postseason starts, all the seedings will come out tomorrow for all of our sports. So, pay attention to our athletic website. We'll be posting it on our website soon as we get it. It'll be up to date, sites, locations, times. So, it'll be a busy couple of months. November 12, November 10th, Booster Club Sports Awards Night will be here. We changed the time to 6:30 at last night's Booster Club meeting, because there was a conflict, we thought, with something else that's going on that night within the community, so we pushed it back to 6:30. Just wanted to get that out. That was at last night's Booster Club meeting. And then, November 12th is the start of varsity and JV sports for the winter season.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Tom, this statistic for this student, 1,000 career volleyball kills. I don't really know much about volleyball, but that sounds like a pretty amazing feat.
A lot of kills.
I meant to mention that one, too. Yeah, actually, we just gave her a nice, a case with a volleyball in it, similar to, our coach put it very well, similar to 1,000 points in basketball. So, for those thousands kills, she earned 1,000 points. So, obviously, it's quite an accomplishment, something that's never been done here, and we honored her, you know, it was, it was just a really nice night. It happened last Friday, Kelly Vahos. Yep. Thanks, Evan.
And if you haven't had the chance to go to a Haldane sporting event during the postseason, make it a, it is a blast. And you want to talk about spirit, and school spirit, just go to any of them, go to whatever it is, whatever the sport is, and just sit there and just take it in, because it is a lot of fun. They really do represent the community well, and it's known throughout the state, too. You know, when the Haldane people show up, you know it. So, make a point of it if you can. It's a lot of fun. Yep.
And no one's left in town, so...
Yes.
Cecilia saw me getting up, so she kind of panicked before I wanted to change the tape.
There you go.
Don't worry, I'll be short. It's going to take me a while to get to my point of my board presentation point, but at the end of this year, or end of the summer, I'm going to be losing our head cleaner. And what I'm about to say, I am by no means am knocking him. He's worked well with me over the last year, and, but what's going to happen now is I'm going to have to hire a new cleaner. So, with this in mind, it's new head cleaner. With this in mind, it's given me my goal for the year that I kind of want to define the position. And again, with that in mind, I'm finally getting to my point. I took four of my workers, three cleaners, and one maintenance person to a leadership skills seminar. It's a two-day seminar down at Bosse's. One was on October 9th, and the other one's going to be on December 18th. And it was really a pretty rewarding experience. I mean, these four people were all very excited about going down. I was really happy to see their reaction, and we all went out to lunch afterward, and we discussed what their feelings from the meetings, and they all came out of it with open eyes, and I think it was very beneficial. And I think I'd need to start doing more stuff like this with my staff. I have to adapt. And certainly, I'm looking at it from where we're going to be facilities-wise in 2024. So, things like these leadership skills help me and help my workers as well, and will help me to make a better decision at the end of the summer next year. Thank you.
Great. Good job, Mike. Okay.
I just have a question for Mike.
Yep.
Because in your report, you mentioned that we're still waiting for SED approval on the solar project. Is there any follow-up on that? Because this was something that's been in the works for a while.
No, I was just talking with Ann the other day about that. I did not make another call this week, but I will tomorrow, and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, I think we need to put a fire under those guys up in Albany, because...
The last I called up, when I spoke with Monolith Solar, they claimed to me that they heard there was going to be an 18-month wait, and I guess they officially got the paperwork in last February. So, it's, no, it's not quite a year yet, but it's getting close. And they told me that there was nothing they could do to push it along. Whether that's true or not, I'm not sure, but I, we'll make another call.
Yeah, let's be the squeaky wheel on that one.
Okay.
And just keep pestering some people, because, yeah, we passed, the board passed the resolution for that project back in June of last year, so...
Right.
You know, it's good for, it's a really great project for the district. Not only is it good educationally, environmentally, but it can also, it will definitely save us money as well. So, the sooner, the sooner we get that done, the sooner we start saving some money.
What's crazy is the governor announced a huge solar kickoff program for educational facilities about a week and a half ago, but you can't get them approved. I mean, you know, grow up. So, all right, well, thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming, as always.
This is the next one. Thank you, Jen.
Have a nice evening. See you tomorrow.
Okay, committee minutes. Haldane Arts Booster Club from the 7th of October. Any questions from the board? They are really starting to kick into high gear, the booster, fine arts booster club, you know?
They are.
They're really starting to get some traction as an organization. I think it's great. I mean, it's really impressive to see in such a short time.
They're taking a little ownership, a little, this is who we are, this is what we want to do, and this is how we're going to do it.
I think it's great, and stuff that they're talking about is absolutely fabulous, so I hope the public takes a look at that stuff and kind of helps them out as well. Any communications from the public, or any public that we have left? Nothing? Okay. New business, H1. We are doing a first reading of Board Policy 7680, Independent Education Evaluations. Any comments? Evan, you were going to kind of just...
So, you know, I was asked to do the read on it, so I emailed Jen a couple of questions, which I had, and she just asked if she wanted to stay, so since it's right here, I said, sure, why not? So, I just wanted to get clarification on, you know, and just let, as far as evaluations go. So, students get, and I emailed back and forth with Jen, so they do them every three years, that's what we do in the city. I think it's a federal mandate, the triennials. They evaluate them every three years, but there's a reevaluate every year. So, my, I just wanted to get clarification was, are we talking about evaluations, or are we talking to reevals? And the reevaluate, it's an evaluation. So, a reevaluate every year would be just based on teacher input, grades, things like that, how they do, and an evaluation is a whole testing. So, that's what we're talking about here, is every three years. I asked Jen how many times this came into play over the last couple of years, just to determine if this was actually something that was relevant, and she said it happened, it's happened twice since we've been here. And she made the point also that it relates to everything, speech, physical, occupational therapy, not just, you know, things that would be in the classroom. So, also, she expressed a concern about, you know, the cost, you know, how do you, you know, it could be, you can't have a ceiling. So, this is, I think, a positive that we're doing, is putting a maximum on it based on what the Bosse's rate is. So, this way, at least, it's a fair rate, so no one could say that it's too low. It's whatever Bosse's charges, that'll be, that'll be the fair price. So, so that was pretty much my summary of the policy.
Any questions from the board? This is the first reading.
Is that Bosse's is very often used as the independent evaluator, so it makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay.
Well, it certainly seems like a very sensible move for us to make here. It really protects us to a reasonable degree.
We might as well just...
Do we want a second read, or do we want to just approve it?
I mean, either approve it now or just approve it at the next meeting, or whatever you guys want to do.
Any thoughts?
Whenever you're ready.
I'm fine approving it now.
Okay.
Okay. Julia, do you want to...
I want to just put it together and just do it on the fourth.
Okay, all right. So, we're going to put this on the agenda for November 4th as an approval item, as a second reading, I guess. So, we'll go through the motions of second reading, and then we'll prove it, or we'll bring it up for approval. How's that sound?
Good.
Okay, great. Thanks, Evan. Thanks, Jen. H2, approval of an amendment for the school calendar. This was the item that we tabled, because there was some questions about the second set of dates for this. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to this, Dr. ...
No, I can certainly share. I knew that we, there was a date that was not on the agenda last time, and there was a date that was in December. There was also a date that was, that was not listed, and so... was, that was not listed. And so what we found out is, when I went back, that we, the district is actually asking for a half a day for the high school on both dates. And so both of us were right. And so it's, we don't actually need to approve it because it's already a half day. And the half day already exists for the elementary and the middle level, unless you want to make a motion. But this is just adding the high school onto a calendar day that already is a half a day. And it's allowing the high school to have time for iPad training at the time, at the same time that the rest of the district has a half day.
Did we approve the last one? We approved the last one, right? Or didn't we?
No, we tabled it.
Tabled it.
Okay. Why don't we just, I think we should just approve it as a motion, make it official.
So the recommendation is that the Board of Education amend the Haldane Central School District calendar for 2014, 2015 as follows. Add one-half superintendent's conference day for the high school for the afternoon on Thursday, December 4th, 2014, and Thursday, March 19th, 2015, for professional development purposes.
Motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Julia. H3, basically to acknowledge the donations of lighting for the homecoming weekend football game on September 26th. We are, you know, obviously gonna get into the habit of accepting donations in kind as well as monetary and product. So we have, basically, Tom submitted a list of people who contributed towards the lights for that evening in the amount of $1,755. The list is Angelina's Nice and Neat Dry Cleaning, Silver Spoon, B&amp;L Deli, Larry's Mowing, Stanko's Auto Body, J. Mark Jewelry, Keck Construction, Whistling Willys, Riverview, Dave Maroni Construction, Bailey Dentistry, Dane's Lumber, Mr. and Mrs. Lassardi, and Pedala Oil. And also, I'll add to that list, just thanking Trish Genduis, who's the head of the Football Association, who did all, I think, all the legwork. So thank you all, you guys, for supporting and making a great, great evening. We don't need to motion it, right? We're just acknowledging it. Okay. Any comments from any of you guys on, on that one?
I have to say, it was a great night, and they had a great turnout. I mean, I think you had probably at least three-quarters of the community there, plus a bunch of alumni came back. And, you know, to follow it up, and, you know, within the next three days, I got, I got about 10 emails asking when the permanent lights were going up. So--
John, is this a new, is this, does this feel like this is the new tradition? Is this like the new protocol, Friday night instead of Friday?
I know they would, I know they would like to. A lot of school districts that have lights play their home games on Friday nights. They don't play Saturdays. If you go, especially a little bit south, like in New Jersey, where football's huge, no one plays on Saturdays. Everyone plays Friday nights, college is Saturday, and, you know, the pros are Sunday. I know Ryan would love to, you know, make it a tradition, have one game, you know, a year, your homecoming game at night, if possible. Because I think it, not only for the spectators, but especially for the kids that actually get to play, it's kind of a big deal for them. So.
And I was talking to John Moranti, who's been around forever. And when he walked in from, from the park, he says, "I don't know where everybody's coming from, but they just keep coming down the hill." So it was fun. It was a fun night.
Thanks, Wes.
Great. Thank you. Just one item, if we could just quickly spend a couple of minutes on it. It's not on the agenda. But November 16th, we're doing the workshop on the early start time conversation. And I just wanted to just get some feedback from the board as to anything specific that you're looking for, or that you want to see, or that you want to provide some direction to Dr. Bowers, so that she can just plan a little more than what I've conveyed. So any thoughts of, you know, if there's anything you want to see, if there's any data, if any, anything in specific. So I figured I'd just throw it out there for a couple of minutes.
Actually, I just found out this week, I won't be able to be here. I'm gonna be away for work that day. So apologize for that. As having two sons that are in high school and middle school, they would love to go in an hour later. They don't, they're not early birds by any stretch. You know, I, I don't have any opposition to it. I mean, the only, the logistical scheduling issues, I think, are what would be a problem, whether it be transportation issues, or scheduling going to BOSI's, you know, does BOSI start an hour later? You know, how does that work? Our inner scholastic sports, obviously, we'd have to, you know, either push the game times back a little bit. The only other thing there is if you'd have to start any of the practices in the fall later, because in the fall, you lose the daylight. And without having lights, that might be an issue. I mean, I think there's ways to work around all those things. But, you know, just things to think about if we do decide to go that route at some point.
Yeah. So logistical operational issues.
Yeah. And along those lines, just something maybe, like, if we can immediately take them, some, some concerns off the table to really have a rich conversation about it, like, like, for example, like, probably a big concern would be elementary school parents needing to get to work. So immediately, I would hope that we would then say we would be able to, like we talked about at the retreat, you know, some type of drop-off paid program, you know, or something like that, like, as far as an early program, or something like that. So, I mean, because I know that would probably be a major thing that, that would be a concern, being that we're so far from the city and, and teacher, parents that are teachers, that would be a big concern for them. So maybe have immediate, you know, acknowledgement of, of issues and things that we could probably fix quite easily and still be able to do this, you know, to, you know, try to rip some of those things right off.
Pete?
Yeah, definitely, there are technical and adaptive challenges here.
Very much so.
Good job. Good job, Brown knows it. Oh, man. What a Brown knows it. God. You got an apple in the pocket, too.
Therefore, I think we need to understand what's the objective, what's the gain here. It's, there has to be a pretty big, well-defined reason for us to go at this, because the challenges, I think, are pretty significant. So we can do anything if we have the motivation to do it. So we need to be, we need to understand the benefits.
Yeah. Good. Thanks. Jen?
I think it'd be interesting just to hear a little bit, oh, sorry. I think it'd be interesting to hear a little bit about, is it possible for Haldane to do it alone? Do the other school districts have to get on board in order for it to work? Or not? You know, can we be the Lone Ranger who just decides to do it, and we, we just make it work, and we fit it into other people's schedules? But, or not? Does, do other school districts have to get involved? And if they do have to get involved to make it smooth, do we feel like that would happen? Do we feel like there would be buy-in for that? Do we feel like that's a good use of our time to be the leaders in that capacity to get the other school districts to create our, our NATO?
Or are there other school, local school districts that have done this already? I mean, I don't know if there, you know--
Right.
--if there are, so that we can point to.
I think that's something I can find out.
Yeah, I mean, along those, kind of, all the other, all of the above, I would like to hear, you know, what other places are doing and how they're talking about it. There's some pretty good, smart school districts around here, and what their thoughts are on all this, if any. I would like to know how this would affect our 10th-period situation, which I think is an excellent program that a lot of places don't have. And I would like to hear how that would be affected, if at all. Ultimately, as the next step of this, I would like to hear from our faculty as to what they think of the whole thing. They're, they're with these kids day in and day out. And, you know, just how logistically something like this could or could not work, and really realistically, what a timeline is. I think this is something that is a long, thorough conversation that has to be done incrementally and slow, rather than just a, da-da. There's a great website called the National Sleep Foundation, obviously. And it's sleepfoundation.org. And they have all kinds of data, as well as advocacy tips and case examples of other places that have gone through this. It's more national than local. But there is some really good tips in there as to how to execute a community relations process to this. It's worth taking a look at. I, you know, I'll email it to everybody, but I think it's worth just poking through it prior to the meeting. It gives you some good examples, and also some good ideas as to how to go about this process. Rather than it being a top-down, school board says yay, it's more of a grassroots, everybody gets their arms around it, because everybody is affected by something like this. So we've gave you, I think, some good things to--
And I can tell you that we've already talked about it with the administrative team. And what I've asked them to do at this point is start brainstorming some of the ripple effects that would occur in their specific department or their specific building. And we're gonna be meeting individually to talk about some of the ramifications that would come from this type of a situation. And so where we can think about the, kind of, the global, they're gonna think more on the nitty-gritty side and some of the issues that they have. So that process has already begun. And by the time we come to you, we'll have a more fleshed-out understanding of some of the issues that we think will occur. The other thing, although the, the study that, what started this conversation really said that kids shouldn't start before 8:30, I, I wouldn't want to go into the conversation thinking that the only option is an hour later. And so anything that we do that would extend the sleep time would be beneficial. They're saying that's the best time to start. But I, I think if we look at going into it with the full-hour change, we probably will have less success because of things like BOSI's, and because of what would happen at the other end. And we'll, we'll have to look at different, different options for 10th period, and, and music lessons, and some of the other things. So all of that has begun in the discussion phase. One of the other things we were talking about, and that is gonna be more of a challenge, and this was discussed at a meeting we had today, is it possible if we needed more buses? Is it possible to run a referendum like we used to be able to do, and just buy buses for this one specific purpose? But we don't believe that with the 2% tax levy increase that you're allowed to do that in addition to your budget. So whatever we would spend earlier on would have to be part of the calculation. So there's, there are challenges now that make it even that much more difficult because of the financial challenges. And in the past, if we wanted to buy three or four more buses, and we decided that this is the direction the district was gonna go, we could run a referendum. But that's not an option right now.
And it sounds, too, like there, there's a lot of words, like ramifications and ripple effects, which are all very, sound on the negative side to me. So I'd also like to make sure that we're spinning the positive and really hearing what, what Peter said, too, is, let's hear what the gains are, you know? And if that's a school nurse talking, or a social worker, or one of our administrators, that, you know, what are we gonna fight for if we're gonna do the fight? And so I think that piece is just as interesting as the details of the logistics.
But I also think it's really important that if this is the direction we go, we go with our eyes wide open.
Yeah.
And, and we understand what the problems are gonna be, so we can circumvent them and not have them kind of crop up in the midnight hour. So--
And maybe this is something that really becomes part of the strategic plan, and, you know, as a future implementation date, rather than something sooner than later. That's not crazy either. Okay. So sleep's not an exclusion to the cap, correct?
Buying buses would have to be taken into consideration if we're going to purchase the buses, if we're going to do a ban for the buses, that's in the tax cap calculation. But that would be under exclusion. So if we're going to buy them, but, then we have to think about, though, that our budget would be increased with salaries. So that would affect the, the tax cap calculation as well, because the budget would grow. So.
Okay. Good. All right. So we got a lot of things to ponder. Should be good. Yeah. And I think there's gonna be a good crowd, so I think we should prepare for that, because I know a lot of people expressed an interest in the topic and learning about it. That's good. Anything else from the board?
Joe, I just have the Tom Campeniles email that he sent to the board today.
Okay.
He raised a couple of issues for us that we'll need to consider. The Audit Committee is recommending that we move forward with the internal audit risk assessment under the existing contract with Cooper Neiman. If you remember, last year, we, we postponed the, the risk assessment in favor of starting the IT audit. And I think that was a great move. But it's now time for us to go back to get our risk assessment redone. So that's the committee's recommendation on that.
When was the last time that happened? Do you remember?
That was two--
Year before last.
Year before last, yeah. And the, the Audit Committee is also recommending that we instruct the district to issue a request for proposals for bids with regard to the external audit for the years 2015 to 2020. While the members of the committee have been pleased with the services provided by Scott and his company, it's felt that with the current contract coming to an end, it's good practice to solicit bids for a new contract from both the current auditor and from additional firms. So that's the recommendation from the Audit Committee.
Okay. Can you forward his email to all of us? Is it an email?
It is an email. I think you all got it. But I'll, I'll check again. I think your wife might have got it, John.
When did he send it?
I got it like 15 times.
When was it sent?
I had it sent, like, I had like 15 of them in my inbox.
Yeah, I got a number of them, too. Yeah. I think it was just sent, was it just yesterday?
I didn't get one.
It was this morning.
Maybe this--
Yeah, I didn't get one.
It was recent.
Maybe if you could just forward it to me. But I didn't get one.
Jen got mine.
Jen got mine.
I got everybody's.
See, I'm out already. Okay.
Your name is on it, Joe.
Maybe it's the wrong address.
No, you're Haldane, Joe Curdo Jr., Haldane.
Maybe Tom went to your spam.
Joe Curdo Jr.
I'm definitely not short of receiving emails, but I didn't get it. All right. So just forward it. Okay. Anything else? So the RFP process, do we have to do anything for that, to, like, approve it, like a resolution or anything like that? Or no? You just, you've already started it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The specs forward, and then I will send it to the Audit Committee, and they will--
Okay. Got it.
See if they want to add or subtract it.
Okay. And then we will accept the audit at the next board meeting, November 4th. Okay. Good. All right. Anything else?
Joe, did you want to comment on the executive session? About realistic?
Oh. Now, just, there was an article in dot info about the conversation that we had about the James Palm thing. And somebody had typed in with a comment that, why was that discussed in executive session? And I think John actually had commented that it is one of the eight items which is covered under education law with regards to when you can go into education, when you can go into executive session. And the eight topics, basically, you know, I won't read them, but there are eight approved things. We follow the letter of the law. We also released the price that was offered to us, which sometimes is not done. And, you know, we follow the law, and it is what it is. And it's there for the right reason. You don't negotiate real estate contracts and agreements in public. It's good business, and it's also legally the right way to do it. So that was that. And that's that. Okay. Anything else from anybody? Makerspace opening tomorrow, 3:30. If anybody's interested, at the second floor of the main building, it should be pretty cool. I know I'll be there. And motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'm not making the Makerspace opening, but Brent is showing me the space on Friday at 2:00. That works better for anybody. There is a secondary tour visit happening on Friday.
We'll get the festivities.
Or you'll get the festivities.
Okay. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.